Yeah, that's what he said.
A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call in a letter to the Commissioners dated March 28, 2024 and reading as follows: The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, April 2, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. in the conference room of the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Prozoraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for your guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of the citizens of our county, and we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Commissioner Melner.
Here.
Commissioner View.
Here.
Commissioner Barron.
Here.
Commissioner Moye.
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson.
This meeting comes to order. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for making us a part of your evening. If you would remember now, please turn off your cell phones so that the ringers don't give any distractions. All right, very good. We have approval, or no, we have special orders of business, and tonight it is our pleasure to welcome our Veteran Services Officer, Dave Xavier. We've been excited to hear from you, and so we will start our Commissioners' informational workshop with Dave.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, Commissioners, Ashley. So as you know, for a while, we've been talking about the future of the Veteran Service Office and how the operations will go and the funding and where it would come from. So there's going to be a proposal tonight for a ballot initiative in November. This is a briefing to describe what the need is, why, what a Veteran Service Officer is, what do we do, some of the accomplishments, et cetera, to give a better understanding on why we need to have one in our county and why it's important to maintain that within our county. So, you probably can't read that, so I apologize. So why do we need a VSO? First and foremost, there's approximately 5,000 veterans and their dependents that live in Delta County. Veterans have also served their country honorably and contributed to our way of life, and they have earned the right for representation within our community. A VSO will also assist with emergency crisis situations through funding, crisis management, suicide prevention, and coordination of available resources. Veterans and their family members also need a representative to assist with their interactions with the Veterans Affairs. It's very complex, federal regulations, state regulations and laws and policies. VSOs improve the lives of veterans and their families through the work that we do, and we always uphold the promise of the VA. The VA honors America's debt to the men and women whose patriotic service and sacrifice has earned them our freedom. That's an actual VA mandate. We also have stewardship for continued funds and care for the benefits for veterans, federal and state, and you'll see that later, what types of funds we're talking about. We also assist veterans with getting their needed medical care. We provide significant financial impact on the veterans, their families and dependents, and the county as a whole, and reduce homelessness and poverty status of veterans and their So what does a VSO help with? On the federal level, some of the things that we do are disability compensation claims, people who are injured while they're serving our country receive compensation for the injuries that they sustain. Non-service connected disability pensions, it's more of a monetary type of a situation to help people to reach the poverty level. DIC or dependency indemnity compensation, that's for the surviving spouses of veterans who have passed away from the service-connected condition. Survivor's pension claims is the same thing that we just talked about but for a surviving spouse versus a veteran. We help out with certificates of eligibility, for home loan guarantees, education benefits claims for the veterans, GI Bill, things of that nature if that sounds familiar, vocational rehabilitation to get veterans back up on their feet and employed, dependence education assistance. In some circumstances, dependents are eligible for VA healthcare, I'm sorry, for VA education. We can help them to apply for that as well in the process of getting things going with those different colleges that are participating in that program. Automobile and adaptive equipment claims, special housing adaptive assistance claims, and specially adapted housing claim. I know there's a lot going back and forth there with all those, but they are very different. One of them is only about a $7,000 benefit, while the other one's about a $70,000 benefit. Champ VA claims, healthcare for spouses and surviving spouses of veterans who are 100% permanent and told disability. We help people with ordering medals even, all the way for the National Archives. We assist with VHA applications, Veterans Health Administration applications, to get them the needed healthcare. Clothing allowance claims, if a veteran has a disability that is bad enough that they may need to have an apparatus or a lotion or something like that, and it ruins their clothes, we're able to help them to get an allowance to replace those clothes that are getting used prematurely or too fast because of the disabilities that they have incurred. VSOs help with records retrieval, DD-214s, got that, DD-214s, personnel records, health records, things like that. Discharge reviews and corrections of military records. Some people, for one circumstance or another, may not have had an honorable discharge, character discharge. We can help them, in some instances, file for a review of that to see if it can get upgraded. Appeals to the Board of Veterans Appeals. Sometimes things don't go as planned with somebody who files a claim for the VA, sometimes. But the Board of Veterans Appeals is a federal-level judge that allows us to put our claim before them, just like if it's in a court setting, except it's done via Zoom or, you know, video. Survivor's Benefit Plans, that's with the Department of Defense. Claims for VA burial allowances, burial in national cemeteries, burial flags, headstones and markers, presidential memorial certificates. Help them to interact with DFAST, Defense Finance and Accounting Services. Retirement programs, CRDP, Survivor's Benefit Plans that we talked a little bit earlier, concurred retirement and disability pay, things of that nature, to make sure that they're getting all of the benefits that are entitled to them. On the state level, we have the Michigan Veterans Trust Fund as a temporary emergency financial assistance, as well as the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency requests for military discharge records from them. There's also the tuition, the Children of Tuition, Veterans Tuition Grant, sorry, with the state of Michigan. Again, that is reserved for folks that are 100% permanent in total. Some of their dependents can get a little bit of tuition break for local college, state, in-state college tuition. Then we have assistance with applications to the state homes for veterans, whether it be Grand Rapids, Marquette, wherever the case may be. At the county level, Soldiers and Sailors Relief Fund, we're all probably pretty familiar with that. Financial assistance during an emergency crisis, financial hardship. DD-214 retrieval from the county clerks. County funeral expenses of veterans and spouses. Tax exemption for 100% permanently and totally disabled veterans. Assisting with and promoting community outreach efforts, whether that be food drives, community events, fairs, public speaking, whatever the case may be. Town hall meetings, we just had one not too long ago with the Veterans Health Administration coming out to our town in Eskenneweby. The Bonifis doing a great job, helped organize and run that meeting. Information sharing of the VA and/or Department of Defense updates or changes. The laws are changing constantly, and that having that focal point, someone who's dedicated to this county, is vital for the veterans within our county and their dependents to know any and all of the changes that are happening within the laws and policies pertaining to the veterans and the Veterans Affairs. Various county veteran ceremonial events that happen throughout the year. Research and coordinate new county programs and benefits. You have the Honor Flight coming up here, May 5th, right, May 5th? This is something that I started here, the Shuttle Van Program, that we didn't have when I started this job in 2015. So the veterans at the time didn't really have a way to get out to the Iron Mountain for their VA medical appointments. So working with Henneville at the time and with the DAV, we were able to split the costs in order to get this van, and we've been able to shuttle veterans out to Iron Mountain VA Medical Facility or Center for their deployments for their medical appointments. And as you can see, you know, over 40,000 miles driven and 1,600 hours of volunteer time, so bravo Zulu to the volunteers especially. So in other words, what does a VSO do? Well, they're a VA Claims Counselor. They have to have like a working knowledge of law and of medicine, anatomy, things of that nature, diseases, how things work in the body. They're a VA Claims Developer and Processor, a VA Benefits Advisor, a social worker, a financial advisor, a van coordinator, as we just saw, a public affairs officer, a veteran's advocate and mentor, a homeless veteran coordinator, suicide prevention contact, community adjunct facilitator, food distribution coordinator, a Veterans Events Coordinator, a human resource specialist, a relief fund authorized agent, a state grant coordinator, office manager and administrator, a new program developer, and a public speaker. That kind of sums up my job in a nutshell. So challenges and improvements. So some of the challenges that we're always going to face is that more veterans are requiring services than they were in the past. It's just a fact. You may have less veterans or more veterans as time goes on, but because of all the new laws that are constantly changing, like you've already heard about the PAC Act that came out not too long ago, the need is growing. Claims benefits are becoming more difficult. Claims that used to be less than seven pages are now 20. Claims that I used to do that were 13 pages long for a pension are now in the mid-40s for the same claim. So it's not getting easier, and it's taking more time than it used to. Federal, increasing responsibility with veteran interactions, claims and resource coordination amongst the whole entire community as a whole, including the state and some of the representatives down south in Lansing. More state and federal programs are being offered. That requires more attention for us to be involved with in order to take advantage of those programs. Some of the improvements that we have, office improvements and expansions, that's for sure. When I started off, again, in 2015, I was in a 10 by 20 foot room at the airport, right? We started taking advantage of the County Veteran Service Fund grant, and about $150, $60,000 later, I'm over in this building with a reception room, an office for a receptionist, two VSO offices, a conference room, and a break room with a full kitchen, thanks to the state and the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency. And for us being able to find a place and for MSUV giving up their space. So there's a lot of people to thank in that one. State grants are being utilized, as I just said. Van travel program was created, as we learned earlier, and then working with local service organizations and with the Delta County Veterans Service Council, I'm sorry, the Delta County Veterans Council, sorry guys, to create a relief fund for gas and food. So we saw a need, and what was happening is that we had too many instances where people might come to me on a Friday afternoon. I'm homeless, I don't have any money, I don't know what to do. Well, all of the programs that were available at the time weren't immediate fixes. They were, well, let's fill out an application, let me get with a committee, I'll let you know in about 24 to 36 hours on a good day. So I got, kind of put our heads together a little bit with the Delta County Veterans Council and came up with this program where the service organizations, very thankfully, the service organizations came together with us and are giving some money to the Delta County Veterans Council for them to buy us food and gas cards. So when something like that happens, at a minimum, I can give them cards so they can at least have food for the weekend until we can figure out what we can do on Monday. I'll still reach out to see if there's any vouchers that are available throughout the county to see if we can get them into a hotel, or I'm scrambling to work with like the soldier or the SSVF or the VA out in Iron Mountain with the homeless coordinator to find him a place to stay for the weekend until we can try to figure out what is happening on Monday. That was something we did not have before, and I know that we're all very proud of that because it's helped a lot of people. So talking about funds. This is a graph of information that comes directly from the VA. It's called a GDX. These numbers here show our veteran population, it has declined slightly, and it has gone up and has gone down, so it's moving around a little bit, it's always going to be changing. But the important thing to know is that when you look at the column that talks about compensation and pension, okay? Compensation and pension is the amount of actual federal dollars that are coming into this county due to the work through VSOs. That through all those disability claims, through all those compensation claims, all those pension claims, we're bringing in almost $32 million a year. Now, as you work across, there's also almost $600,000 in education and vocational rehabilitation. Those are all of those other programs I was talking about for people to take advantage of the VA's education programs. Insurance and indemnities, unfortunately, a lot of those are when a veteran passes away, if they have some kind of a VA life insurance or something along those lines. And then we have medical care, $25 million in medical care. When I look at that number, I can't help but think about the veterans in this community, if they were all of a sudden had to fit, you know, to put up a $25 million bill that they're not having to do right now because of the VA and the benefits they're getting from the VA. It's very significant. So when you add it all up together, the total expenditures for 2022, they don't have 2023 out yet, that's probably not until June or so, we're at about $58 million in benefits coming in from the federal government that's landing its feet into Delta County because So why are we here? Myself and the veteran leadership in the county believe the time for requesting funds has passed. We recommend to move forward with the millage and create the Delta County Department of Veterans Affairs. I know that there are folks out there that would possibly like to get the money without using any new millage, and I was originally for that as well. But what I'm finding out is there are too many hurdles and involvement outside of the department while trying to operate or make decisions about the future of this office or how we should move forward with creating the Department of Veterans Affairs. Creating the Department of Veterans Affairs with and operating a millage, this would provide a budget with the best ability to allocate the funds to the Veterans Committee that it would create. Once the board is established, they would be working with me to develop more programs for the future. It can be things related to office staffing, administration, operations, veterans' food relief, emergency food relief, emergency relief in general, veteran life improvement events, educational events, mental health events, sponsored food programs and food cards, clothes closets or coat closets, dental programs, travel cost reimbursements for medical appointments, career fairs, and more. Additionally, it's not always about what we're doing versus what we're not doing. It can also be about things we could be doing better and that have a long-term sustainability with the proper staffing. Having our county veterans mainly depend upon one VSO, regardless of who it is, is not reasonable or sustainable, especially when we have the second highest populations of veterans in the UP. That is why a lot of counties have more than one VSO, even though they have less veterans than we have. Those counties made a decision to place a certain level of importance on providing support that has the potential for making real difference in the lives of the veterans who live in our county, not to mention the return impact it has on the county as a whole. Having the right staff of two full-time accredited VSOs would allow the office to help our veterans in a more timely manner with better services, increased outreach to the public, and ultimately improved quality of life for our county veterans and the Veteran Service Office employees. There is no limit on the types of programs and events that the office could host or sponsor, and the office staff in conjunction with the Veterans Board would be one of the ones to continuously review the betterment ideas and which ones are pursued each year as they may change. Having the increased annual budget and staff would help to provide department sustainability and the foundation for the support of the programs that the veterans have earned and rightfully deserve. Now, and this is in no way implying that the county has done anything wrong, nor am I trying to put any negative light on the county or its representation. However, I am here today advocating for our county veterans with the best option that I believe will make the most impact on their lives and the county as a whole. So proposal. As you can see on the screen or the wall, proposal is a roll call vote for the following action. To allow an initiative to be placed on the November 2024 ballot for Delta County residents to vote on the following in November. Establish some millage in the amount of 1/10 of a mil to fund the Veterans Relief Fund and provide veteran services through the County Veterans Affairs Office. Why? The staff in the office properly will be in sync with job responsibilities and service demands with a realistic budget that is managed by veterans for veterans independent of outside financial dependency, meaning the state or otherwise. We want to create a long-term office sustainability and employee stability with accredited VSOs. We want to create Veterans Board for office program decision-making, increase the emergency relief amount that we currently have for veterans. We want to provide creativity and flexibility with veterans' programs creation and operation. We want to increase opportunities for access to veterans' benefits, and we want to reduce the financial hardships, the homelessness and the suicides that we're seeing in our And at that point, I haven't left up for any questions.
Yes, several. I think it was 12 or 13 months ago, we sat in your office and I got an eyeful of, somebody knocked on your, I mean, there was three or four or five people banging on the door, and it was after 4 o'clock. We originally looked at like a public act for indigent soldiers and sailors. You found what information turned you away? I'm all for this, don't get me wrong, but you found information that indicated that probably wouldn't be adequate or, because my question really is, is 1/10 of a mil enough? Why not 2/10 of a mil? Because I don't want you selling yourself short financially.
Sure, understood. Part of when we were talking about that initially, we're just looking at the Emergency Relief Fund.
Right.
Right? So this, once we use the Public Act 192 as well as, there's a portion within the Michigan Constitution as well, I believe it's Article 6, but don't quote me, because it might be a mistake, that allows us to do this millage, and it just was more, I think, productive and more self-sustaining for the county, for us to be able to have that. So, because we're going to use a portion of that for the emergency relief, but we also want the rest of that portion to be used for services.
To put things in perspective, a $200,000 home would cost somebody 10 bucks a year. So why not 20 bucks a year and really get, I'm just asking and being devil-
I understand. I'm trying to go one step forward and see what we can do.
Right.
And we have to start somewhere, and I'm trying to be in the middle where I can get support from the residents of Delta County because, you know, there's, although there's 5,000 that are veterans or related to veterans, there's 33,000 who aren't.
Let me make a prediction.
You know, so I'm trying to be somewhere that's going to make sense, where we're going to have enough money to operate two people fully versus going over-
What would 1/10 of a mil give you, two people?
Yep, yep, definitely two people, and it would up our emergency relief to, you know, 30,000.
I don't mean to hog the, go ahead, guys, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair. Oops. Right, yeah.
130,000.
That's what I want to know, is the money amount.
Probably 130,000 for 1/10 of a mil.
Ashley, is that correct?
Right.
So every tenth is 130,000?
Yep.
Okay, my other question is, I'd vote for that millage.
That's a statement, give it to question.
But my question is, why can't the General Fund support this? We've been talking about this for a year, and I know I asked where we are with that General Fund, and it's going to take a long time to get that answer at this point, but a new tax request in my district is another, it's a worthwhile burdensome for the people I would feel in my, it's just my opinion, but the schools just requested millage, and I feel that they're going to need that and come back with that. The city, Gladstone, is requesting 4.4 mils. The county recycling material management is going to come back, and they're going to need to increase fees or maybe a millage for whatever the government is forcing on us. I guess what I was looking at, why can't Ashley, our administrator, Mrs. Young, our administrator, and you sit down and come up with a budget like you do with all the other departments that will suffice everything you need and see if it's already in our General Fund to support that at this point, right now? I just, I mean-
And we're all working at bare minimum.
Well, I realize that.
We did have a meeting, just so you know.
Okay.
We did have a finance meeting and we reviewed, and so it came down to the question on if the General Fund supports this, where are you going to cut it from? Because we're balancing right now. I don't have, we don't have-
What's our fund balance?
Right, but you don't want to go into the deficit.
Commissioner, what they're doing is, they're giving it to the people.
You don't want to run your county in the negative every time and taking from your fund balance.
They're making it a decision of the people. The people will yea or nay it, but if we dip into the fund balance-
No, I know that, but it puts everybody in a tough predicament if we can do something about it currently with our fund balance, I guess. Maybe we can't, maybe I'm not understanding it. But the other thing is, when you spend based on income and not on condition of need, so you're going to get so much income, so you're going to make sure you spend all that, but if your need is less than that income and you're going to make new programs, I would rather see all the needs being taken care of out of the General Fund than getting-
How do you know that? I mean, he's been as frugal as a church mouse so far. You've been beyond frugal. I mean, that statement, I disagree wholeheartedly.
The statement is, what are the figures? We're not given any figures on what it costs to do where you lack in funding. I don't have no figures, I-
He has no funding, basically, he's asking for some.
All the fundings, our proposition is on the board packet. It's at the end of your board packet. What was presented to the Finance Committee is also added there.
No, I looked at that, but that's just regular what was in the general budget anyways.
No.
If I may.
Yes, you may, Mr. Peterson.
No, this is what we're proposing as a structure.
Mr. Peterson's got the floor. Go ahead. We'll get your next Ashley.
Excuse me. I've said this several times, and I guess I'll say it one more time. When I came in to be a Commissioner, my thoughts were is I was going to cut. I was going to cut unneeded positions, I was going to fix, try and do something with salaries, and I found out quickly, there is no positions to cut, there is no salaries to cut, and there is no money to do anything about it at this time in the county coffers, and I think that the millage is the best way to go about it, and I understand there's other taxes. I would rather see other programs cut than the VSO. So I'm glad, I'm happy with the request that he's making, and I would like to pass it myself. The only other question I had is I was looking up there and watching you go through this, and I saw $300 for burial benefits. Seriously?
No, no, that's a- No, no, that's a stolen.
Yeah, it's a state, Public Act, that that's what it is, you know, $300.
Wow. Ashley, did you want anything?
Yep. The VA used to be that way too.
Your social security only gives you 200.
I know. Burial, I think now it's over 25.
And I look at it as if Dave is confident this one-tenth of a mil is going to provide everything he needs, then we should go with it.
Mr. Barron.
Well, on the finance committee, we, we're there, Commissioner Peterson and myself are on the finance committee, and this millage is in addition to what the county is already putting out. So, it's, there's a significant amount that the county is already putting forth for this. And I believe that we've, with our budget and what's taking place, that this is the way to go it as far as letting the people understand the support of their veterans. When you are looking at veterans and their related families approaching a one-seventh or so of our population, that's a pretty big chunk that is part of our community, and it's deserving of our support. And it will, and as I said again at the finance committee meeting, we thought this was the best thing to bring forward, and that's why we're here discussing it this evening, and I think we're, we've got a pretty good report here. As I, I looked at what, all the things that you're doing out of your office, my reaction was, when do you have time to sleep? There's, that's quite a lot that you have going, because you're the only, I mean, you're the only person there, and so it makes a whole lot of sense to have a second. One of the things that came up in the finance committee meeting is that Schoolcraft County actually has two-tenths of a mil that they're levying. They have 700 veterans. We're, we're talking well over 3,000, 3250, and they have four VSOs. Slight difference in that, so we're, we're not, we're not trying to stay in that same ratio, but we're at least improving, I mean, it's 100% improvement for you, the second individual. But I do have another question. It's pertaining to this veterans facility that's been down near the Menards. What is the interaction with that, or if there is any, with the VSO here?
Sure. What, but they are, they are all VA employees, and they're all licensed mental health counselors that provide mental health counseling for combat veterans, and I provide them with clients, pretty much, but that's all that they do. Not that it's all they do, but that's all that they do, you know, as far as their job requirement, you know.
Any, anybody else say?
Yeah, I, I have another question.
Go ahead, sir.
Don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm supporting this, but I, I have to bring up, you know, the other 80% of the population that would want questions answered, but what, what is a VSO in Rapid River? Who is that? What do they do?
Okay, good question. So, you have other service organizations that do come into the area that can do some VSO work, right? And, yeah, there's American Legion person that comes down from Marquette, I think they're like once a week or once every other week or something like that, right? We have a VSO with the DAV that, as you may or may not know, I've offered up my, at the time, empty, you know, office next to me, so that we could kind of work jointly together for more information sharing. The issue with, with those organizations is that none of them are dedicated to Delta County, right? They are a state resource. So, they're going to go where they feel there's need, right? So, if they're here this week, they could be gone next month, you know, so there's no real stability when it comes to that. We like to hope that they'll stay in the area, but if they decide next month that all of a sudden Houghton has a whole bunch of more veterans that they're not getting service, they could move their person up to Houghton. They're not attached to Delta County, they are a state asset, right? And that should tell you why they're in Delta County, because they see a deficiency. They see the fact that we don't have enough VSO help here, so they're going to be here, you know, as long as, as, as they feel that they're, you know, the need is there.
Well, that's, that's a real good answer for support of this, because there's also a VSO office. I think Michigan Works, right over here, they have one that comes down from the Sioux St. Marie, is it, or not?
That's what I'm aware of.
Yeah, there's one in, one in Michigan Works building there.
Well, Michigan Works, what they're going to do is that they are a state employee, if I'm thinking of the same person, they have a veterans person that comes in, and they just help them to find employment. That's all they do. They send people to me for, for assistance.
Okay, well, I mean, it's just good to know, because you see these ads all over.
Yep, no, we all kind of interact with each other in one form or a fashion, but what I can tell you for a fact is that 90% of them are going to come through my office because I am the resource hub for all the information that's out there.
Yeah, well, my, my family has a great history, my immediate family of veterans. Matter of fact, I see one out here tonight.
Steve, I, um.
But I, I wanted to make a s-
I apologize. Go ahead. I stepped on you.
I didn't feel it. But I, I, in my mind, I, I just think the parents and the people left behind on all those that have served, those that have signed up, they're all awesome people. We, we all know that. Actually, our vets swore an oath to uphold the Constitution of, of the United States, to serve our country honorably, knowing, and this is the, the part that really upset me every time my kids were overseas, even if it was during peacetime, knowingly that they could be giving up their lives at any time.
Correct.
So, it's, it's important that we start serving those who served us. So, we'll see what happens when, if, on, when we get back into the meeting, if we're going to decide something on here tonight. But that, that's my stance on it. I just, I, I'm, I don't know if I should ask if I should exempt myself from voting, because I would vote if you wanted to give them a million dollars because of my background and.
Your passion doesn't disqualify you from voting, sir.
Yeah, but I have a conflict of interest, that I, I want them to be supported like that, you know, I mean.
And remember, tonight, we're not voting on a millage, we're just voting for the public to decide.
We're voting on moving it forward or not, I don't know, I mean, to, to.
That's all we're doing, is voting whether or not.
Yep.
You support.
Understood.
The commissioner's support, putting it on the ballot in November for the residents to decide.
Anybody with anybody, questions, questions for Dave?
And this is a last resort, right? I, I, I'm not trying to throw a, a kinker into it, I'm just trying to make sure that there is no way our general fund can support $130,000 for this department. And why was it left out for 12 years? That would be the other thing, or whatever, I don't know.
I can address some of those, but, um.
Okay.
I've got some, it's important for me to know that the public knows that you haven't been forgotten. I mean, the people have been, over the last 14 months, in and out of your office. We changed directions once or twice because we figured it would be more advantageous for the veterans doing it another way, and so I just want, echoing what Steve just said, I, you know, this has always been a sacred cow for me, and it's not, you really shouldn't have sacred cows when you, but you guys are, and I, I, my prediction is you will be overwhelmingly supported by the taxpayers of this county, because they're overwhelmingly patriotic and understand the value of the services that you have provided. This position used to be 10 hours a week, and a real sweet lady, you know, did it, and then when we hired you full-time, we kept growing based on the need and what you did, and you made Michigan number, uh, Delta County in Michigan, the second-best county in providing its veterans what they need, and that's, I, it's all you. So, on behalf of this county, we are in your debt, sir.
Thank you very much.
But one, one more question. Don't get upset.
Who's upset?
Well, I thought I heard someone gasp or something. The biggest thing, the oversight is that council you want to make, and is there any county oversight where you would have to, I mean, since it's county funds, I mean, is, is our administrator going to, to have some type of oversight on this? Just, just like a double standard to make sure there's, everything is, I'm not questioning that, because I believe it will be, but I mean, there has to be some type of oversight other than just the individual running it, right or not?
Yeah, so what will happen is typically there, like an advisory board as well, you know, so you have a three to seven people, various military, you know, veterans, that would be the Veterans Council or the Department of Veterans Affairs Board, right? And then, yes, you can have a, and an advisory-type status, a, like a commissioner overseeing, you know, or not overseeing, but participating in there too, to kind of be the, the feedback between the, the county board of commissioners and, and that board as well.
I mean, would it be in, in our county books? Uh, okay. All right, thanks, Ashley.
So, the board would still approve their budget and everything, like we do with all of our others.
Okay. Well, that, that's real uplifting to know that there's oversight that way too, so the taxpayers can get information whenever they need it on how that money is being dispersed for our veterans. Let's move forward.
Anybody else, Jim? Sir, we, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
I believe that will conclude the commissioner's informational workshop.
You will.
So, very good. Now, we would be going into regular orders of business, and that's the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of 3:19, 2024.
So, move.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Is there additional discussion? All those in favor of approving these minutes, yes?
It was, it was John.
Oh, John, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry, sir. Oh, you, you seconded, I thought you had some discussion, okay. Okay, so Barron motioned, Melner seconded, I apologize. All those in favor of approving those minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that carries, next item would be the approval of tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner View. Is there additional discussion? All those in favor of adopting tonight's agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries, we have an agenda. Very good presentation of written communications, communications received, communications forwarded. You have some.
Lots of them.
Yes.
Commissioner?
I, there was a couple of things in there that I wanted to talk about, but I see that I cannot get it on my, my iPad right now. I, I don't know why. John tried to get it and.
You may look at them if you wish.
Oh, okay. I don't want to spend all the time, I thought there was, well, one, one of the things was we still have the wrong address, addressing the, the county with the wrong commis-, uh, the wrong chairman. I'd like to see Mr. Moyles be put on all them correspondence when it's mailed here from the dam and UP Power and stuff. It's.
Do we know it? Thank you.
And what else was there? It's not that important right now that I, I see something about it, it was just a point of interest, I wanted to, to know about something. There's too many pages here to spend all the time going through it, but thank you very much.
You're welcome, Commissioner. All right, I need a motion to put these on file.
I'll make a motion to put the communications received and forwarded on file.
Support. Moved by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? All those in favor of putting these on file signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are on file. Reports of standing statutory special committees and others.
Yes, they're attached into your report packets.
All right, um, we would need a motion to place those on file.
So, move.
Moved by, uh, moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion? All those in favor of putting these on file signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They carry, very good. Public comment on agenda items, there's no one for the sign-in, that doesn't mean you can't address the board on an agenda. Anybody? Please state your name and welcome.
My name is Brian Godfrey, I'm the president of Upper Michigan Gun Owners. First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner View for having District 2 back with that. I 100% support this millage, and this is why Dave came in six, seven months ago and broke my heart, I didn't realize we had such a problem in this area with veterans not being able to have certain amenities. Our organization, I had reached out to him, I would say, a couple of weeks ago, just to ask him about doing some kind of benefit for the VSO. It was supposed to be little, and VA got involved, and I had a meeting with all the Uppers in all of Michigan last week, and it went from little to we now have the RuPaul Building on June 15th. What we're going to do is our organization's going to step foot, we're going to provide all the food, we have enough volunteers, um, we're going to charge a fee, we're going to come in, people get to eat, and we're hoping for at least 1,000 people, so we can at least turn around. What we want to do with that money is hand it back over to the VA and the VSO in the form of gas cards and food cards for the veterans, because I realized there was a super need, and then after he talked tonight, I did, did, I'm going to talk to him and the VA again, didn't realize there was a clothing lead or anything like that also. So, I just wanted to let everybody be aware of that agenda item, that our organization's going to step up and be really forefront in that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Brian, thank you. All right, additional comment on agenda items? Anybody going once?
We got.
Oh, we got, I'll stop the going twice, you're, thank you very much. Good evening.
Ann Fix Escanaba, I want to talk about supporting this millage for the veterans. Delta County has been behind years and years of not having this millage for our veterans. I did Veterans Affairs for Bart Stupak for over 10 years, and we had service officers come from the Purple Heart, the DAV, the American Legion, all of those state organizations coming into Delta County to help veterans with claims. Ann Roman was a part-time VSO. She did not, she, I, I respect Ann, but the bottom line is, these veterans need help with disability claims. Also, the $52 million out of the VA, correct me, Dave, if I'm wrong, that is appropriated every year in Congress. So, they have to ask for that money for that medical help every year. Now, if you want to take money from the general fund, who is going to have to come every year and see if that money and that program's going to continue? That's why I think we need this millage, and we need it now.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we, please, Snuffy, you're. Don't interrupt, seduce yourself, is that, I'm sorry, but go ahead.
Well, I, I just want to state with respect to the commissioners, I am going to have to leave the meeting early. I won't be able to stay till the end, and it looks like possibly there may be something that concerns me a little further down the line, but I have a scheduled DNR Dear Management Initiative statewide meeting online at 7:00, and I've, I've got to be in attendance for that, okay? But I will support, I will work with you, if what I think is going to happen is going to happen as far as recreation commission, okay? I just want to, I don't want to give you the feeling of walking, okay? I'm supporting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for comments on agenda items, please?
County Commissioners, Steve Kacharny, Commander at Delta County Veterans Council, working hand-in-hand with Dave on a lot of things. I hope you support this millage initiative, and it sounds like you guys are, because we, as a county, the second-largest populated county in the UP, is like the only one that doesn't have a Department of Veterans Affairs yet. And by taking it out of the general fund and putting it into the hands of the veterans, we are no longer burdening the county or asking the county for more money here or there, or can we increase this? Now, we have a budget that's controlled by the veterans, not by the whims of the new county commissioner that's coming in three years from now. It's an established budget that cannot be touched or cut, because it's paid for by the people, used by the veterans, not the whims of the general fund. The general fund can be used for other things that are more important. These funds can be utilized just for the veterans and their needs, which is why this millage is so desperately needed, and because Dave DeZavier, who I've worked with now for the past seven years since I moved back here, is just overwhelmed doing it by himself. He cannot do it by himself. You said it yourself, there's four VSOs in the county with only one-third our veteran population. I don't know how Dave does it. I've seen his office, many of you have seen his office. He has. He has voicemails that are going weeks back because he cannot get a hold of everybody, and he cannot talk to everybody in the amount of time necessary. We talk about the other organization BSOs, the DAV, the American Legion, the VFW BSOs. They are there for claims processing only. They have nothing to do with education benefits, burial benefits. They are there to help them file claims against the VA for injuries. That's their job. His job is everything else that was on that list. And he cannot do it all. So thank you for hearing him tonight. Thank you for standing up for the veterans of our community, and hopefully you can continue to support this initiative, and we can put it to the public's vote to establish this because it's beyond time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Comment on agenda items, please?
I'm sorry, I want to add to what I was saying earlier.
Brian, you can't do that.
I can't do that? Oh, I'll wait until you add.
Sorry. You're killing me here. All right, any, anybody else comment on agenda items? I want to, I want to let you do that, but I'd open up Pandora's Box, and so, all right, so we are closing the public comment on agenda. You for those of you who have commented. Committee reports, administrator's report.
There is none. It will be next week.
Very good. That's easy to file, then. It's, okay. Any other? Finance committees? Okay, wonderful. Okay, department head updates? Welcome.
Good evening. Lauren Wickman, prosecuting attorney. Believe it or not, we're about a quarter through 2024. Seems hard to believe at this point. So I wanted to provide a first quarter update for the board as well as the public about what has been going on in the prosecutor's office up until this point. Recently, we finished some construction. We're going through kind of an overall facelift. One of the big projects that was one of my focuses taking office was to create a more private and secure conference room within our office. Prior to our changes, we had to escort people in and out of our secure area of our office, putting office staff potentially in harm's way. It also made it very uncomfortable for victims, victims' families to have to be paraded around essentially. So through, we secured funding through the Crime Victims Rights Program, which is one of the grants that our office runs. And they ended up covering 100% of costs of a door that basically goes and creates a private conference room within our office structure already that can be secured and can be outside of the general public access for when we have a victim-related crime that individuals have to be waiting for the court, waiting for trial, what have you. And it also creates a more sense of security and safety for our staff. We are also finalizing our new carpet installation within our office. From speaking with maintenance staff, we were one of the last offices to have the carpet replaced, and some of them estimated that that carpet was actually older than I was. So we're very happy to have it. They're finishing that up. I wanted to thank the maintenance staff for their hard work as well as their cooperation with what is our very, very busy court schedule that seems to be changing all the time. So they were very flexible with it and made it a very smooth, easy process. While working through that construction dust, we have reviewed and processed approximately 475 criminal complaints so far this year. That is up from only 350 one year ago. With that, each one of those cases requires a unique approach in decision-making, which may include a decision to authorize a charge, a decision to deny a charge, a decision to request further information or investigation, a need for a conversation with that investigating officer, a review of case law determines certain legal issues, and no two cases are the same. Within that timeframe, our office has also seen more violent weapon-related offenses than we have previously. Those require a certain particular time and effort that go into them as well. Those numbers do not include the numerous cases that are still being investigated by local law enforcement and require additional collaboration, particularly what has seen an increase in fatal overdose deaths in the last month, which are likely to involve suspected fentanyl. One other thing of note that does not necessarily relate directly to this first quarter, but was something that was brought to my attention more so in this first quarter and that I'm particularly proud of is how our office has worked with the Circuit and District Court to reduce their backlog and their dockets. Prior to, well, because of the COVID backlog, we had significant cases set for trial that, quite honestly, I don't think anybody thought we were going to dig our way out of, let alone as quickly as we have. So starting in 2022 in District, excuse me, in Circuit Court, had approximately 80 cases, 80 felony cases set for trial. You can only have one felony trial for the most part a week, so that would take over a year to have cleared just that case log. In District Court, we had a post-COVID backlog of 157 cases, and we're lucky to be able to have two District Court trials a week, and that's with no other court hearings going on. We are down to seven felony cases in the Circuit Court and 15 District Court trials that are left on the docket. We could not have done that. I could not have done that without my staff in my office. We're working hand in hand with Judge Conamopolis and Judge Parks, as well as their staff. Our office was able to accomplish removing that backlog, diminishing that backlog by choosing the right cases to take to trial, as well as making resolutions and plea deals where needed. We also did so without reducing our prison commitment rate, so that has been maintained since pre-COVID, despite that backlog and despite resolutions throughout that process. Our office has been working closely as civil counsel to renew, review several contracts from the airport that are set to be renewed so we can provide the airport manager with a solid footing moving into the future. Outside of the courtroom setting, our office has been actively attending continuing education programs put on by the Prosecutors Association of Michigan. It's a unique organization that's part legislative, part advocacy, part teachers, and our dues to that organization largely cover most of the costs for their extremely informative programs, their assistance with legal research, and general help to our office as we need it. Chief Assistant Wickwire has attended a variety of webinars focused on prosecuting operating while intoxicated cases, as well as focusing on the increase of drug-driving cases across the state. In February, I had the opportunity to attend the Midwinter Conference put on by the Prosecutors Association. One of the informative panels that we had actually presented the prosecutors from Oakland County and her response to the Oxford High School shooting, as well as the M County Prosecutor and his response to the MSU shooting in February 2023. It created a round panel discussion about how prosecutors can respond with their local law enforcement to mass casualty situations. And it's created, I came back and brought that information and had some very good conversations with our local law enforcement to ensure that should such an event occur, everyone knows how to respond, what to do, and we're all on the same page. Moving into the future beyond this quarter, myself and Attorney Wickwire will be attending the Regional Conference for the Coordinated Community Response Team, sponsored by the CAC here in Delta County, along with other local agencies, to discuss how our, how our office can better work with these agencies to respond to child abuse, sexual assault, and the like. I am scheduled to attend the Vulnerable Adult Financial Exploitation Seminar that is being put on by the Prosecutors Association, as well as the Attorney General Elder Abuse Task Force. Finally, I was selected to participate in the Arson Prosecution School that was sponsored by MSP and is scheduled to occur at the end of April. We will have an intern starting in mid-May. As I started off as an intern in the office, and I'm extremely excited about this opportunity and the renewed opportunity to have an intern in our office. I think it's a valuable experience, not only for the individuals in the office, the court system, but also the intern. In speaking with our future intern, he currently attends Cooley Law School in Lansing and will be completing his second year prior to coming north, and he's extremely excited about the opportunity. Finally, I wanted to bring to the board's attention, as well as the public's attention, that April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. A walk-in vigil has been, is being planned by the CAC, and it's going to be held on Sunday, April 21st, at 5:00 p.m. at the Caris Band Shell in Luddington Park to raise awareness for child abuse prevention and honor children who have had loss their lives to the terrible crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the update, Lauren. Any other department heads? Department head updates? All right, very good. That, now, general orders of business. We would be on to old business, and we're right back to the Veteran Services Officer Commission. I expect I'm hearing a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Dave's language.
Dave's language for the 1/10 of a percent millage.
You're approving, descending it onto the public?
Correct.
For November's decision by the public?
Correct.
Put it on the ballot, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Melner. If this is the time to make statements, anybody wish to speak? Go ahead, John.
I just, I just got one question for Nancy. Is this a certain year where it has to be renewed, or is it forever?
Well, this is a new one. I'm not sure what, how many years it lasts.
Based on the language.
Okay.
Then it comes up to a renewal then, right?
Yeah, if we have 10, based on what we put in there.
What do we want to do for the first vote? We want to go 10 years?
I would like to see it for 10 years, yes. That's just my own personal...
Would you change your motion to include a 10?
We haven't submitted your request. I don't believe his verbiage stipulated years. Did it?
No.
So we don't have to change anything. We can just add that 10 years. Would you add?
I will, I will add the 10 years.
You will add the 10 years. Will you support the 10 years?
I will support it, definitely.
Okay, so clerk, please be advised of that. Mr. Barron, do you have any comment? I thought Melner supported, but whatever.
I supported it.
Have one other thing that we had talked about at the Finance Committee meeting. And if I remember correctly, we can put this in the millage and, and move it forward faster and get it so implements in December, if I'm correct.
Yes, if it's on the November ballot.
Yeah, I would like to, I'd like to make sure that that happens.
You want to expedite the?
Expedite the, the money for him and get it so it pays in December.
Commissioner Barron, anything?
Well, it...
The vote's in November, and he would start getting his money in December.
Well, this route that we're choosing here, there is another route, and it was spoken to by Mr. Xavier. The, it's a millage that could actually have automatically been put on, but the availability of it for what's needed was not there.
P. 213, you're talking about Indigenous soldiers.
Yes, and so this made much more sense to do, and that way the people of Delta County have their opportunity to support the vets.
Mr. Review, I see the wheels going.
Not at this time.
Oh, wow. All right, what Mr. Barron was talking about is initially about 13, 14 months ago, we looked at instituting Public Act 213. That would have limited Dave and the BSO to just a very specific pinpointed area. I think what we're doing is we are authorizing the verbiage that he chose and the path that he chose because he's our expert on the vets. He's the one wearing two dozen different hats, and we put the vote right in the lap of the people. It's the power of the people. And we have been serving our veterans. I've wanted to do more for a long time for them, and I am delighted, and I'll say it again, I believe this county will prove to you that they understand the value of our vets. I would like a roll call for this motion, please.
Commissioner Melner?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Ann Moyles?
Yes.
Well, now it's up to the people once we get the verbiage down. Thank you, Dave. All right, Michigan Agriculture Environmental Assurance Program. Mr. Barron, I believe this one's yours.
Yes. This is something that was brought up, I believe, four weeks ago, and I actually brought it up. It was concerning the MEET program, as it's called, this acronym for this Michigan Agricultural Environmental Assurance Program, about the possibility or the probability or whatever, the chance that there was, this program is very confidential amongst landowners. And also, the other aspect of it was that Delta County, as a landowner, might have been singled out. And there has been, as I understand, a review of this done by the Michigan Department of Ag. I've not seen the report. But there's, and so I don't see the Chair of the Soil Conservation District here. But I have a couple of, of items that, information that's been presented to me from the, from actually a former now employee of the, of the Soil Conservation District who was, resigned, but under difficult circumstances. So I want to have these, I have two letters from this individual, actually emails that were sent to me. I would like to have these placed on record. And that, I think it goes along with the concerns that were brought up a month ago or four weeks ago, and I believe they needed to be entered in the record because I I thought seriously about reading them into the record right now, and I think it, it should be, I want to at least read the resignation letter into the record. And because I believe that we have a situation there that needs to be rectified.
Mr. Chair, I have, I don't know how to handle this, but he has information that no other commissioner has, and I don't feel it's worth...
Right now, he has the floor, sir.
Well, I'm, I'm, well, how do I?
Once he's done doing what he does, you...
I don't want him to do what he's doing.
That would be...
So what would I say? Politarium. I think he's, he's talking about stuff that we have no knowledge of.
He is not out of order, but if you want, your note, your protest is duly noted.
Is it a protest?
I would assume if you want it to be quiet, it is, yeah. I mean, what else would you call it?
Well, he, he has the floor on issues that only pertain to what he has information on, and I don't think it's fair to us as county commissioners to have stuff read into the records, documents put into the records, without, without us being able to know what it is. That's all I'm saying. It just doesn't sound proper.
Mr. Barron, duly noted.
That, well, that's, I get... This is from a, this letter is a letter of resignation from Lindsey Robinson.
Would you like to see it?
I don't even know who she is.
She's the, if, she's a forester, or a former forester at the Soil Conservation District. And I'm sorry if you don't have this information. This arrived to me just recently, but it's still, that's why I'm presenting it here and putting it on record. So you would be able to review this.
Commissioner Barron, I can't wait until we all have privy information like you have.
If that would be the pleasure of the board to delay this for until next week, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, I mean, I, I would feel more comfortable if all of us have the documents you're talking about.
Can you give that to Edman so they can get it?
Yes, I've had three documents that I'd like to have entered, three different ones to be entered in to our pertaining to the resignation, and one is the, the letter that was in our local press
Okay.
from Senator McBroom.
Okay.
So.
So you have, Edman is going to give everyone a copy. Are you going to move to have that put into the record now or just wait?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to have them put into the record.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barron to put that into the record. Is there a second to that?
I will second that.
All right, so we have a motion, a second. Now is your additional discussion, sir, any?
I already spoke. Thank you for, if I was out of order.
You're not. I mean, your point is clearly taken. So you'll be getting copies of that. Mr. Barron wishes to add this into the record. We've got a movement and a second additional discussion before we move or vote.
What record are we putting this, just back into, for the next meeting?
It's in the, it'll be in the record of this meeting.
It'll be in the minutes of this meeting that he had these items entered into the record.
That nobody can see.
Yeah, I, he's, do you want to wait for a week to?
Well, you have a motion.
Well, we, we have a motion, and, yeah, no, it's entering these into the record so that it gives the, Commissioner View and the rest who want to review those. And we could respond to the item 200 and finish business next week.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor of entering this into the record signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed.
Aye.
Opposed. So you have, unless I'm wrong, it's a 3 to 2?
Yep.
All right, so that has been entered into the record. All right, so that has been entered into the record.
You would want to re, re-vote to do a roll call just to?
You wanted to do a roll call, Nancy, just to clarify any confusion?
Well, it was View and Melner that opposed, right?
Correct. All right. So unfinished business, we look at the response to the Department of Natural Resource Trust Fund.
My, my question to Ms., Ms. Young was, is this sent in already?
I'm just waiting for a signature, approval for a signature and I can send it in.
Okay, and what do you recommend who to sign it? I, in my opinion?
It was, it was addressed to Chairman Moyle, so, or Chair Moyle. So I would recommend a signature.
Who wrote it? Who wrote this?
There was a combination of people, myself and Ashley sat down and did it, based on some records that were correlated by Mr. Peterson. I have no problem signing this at all.
Well, no, I, I think it's a great report. I, I just want to know who penned it. And then to the extent that not all the commissioners had input on this, correct?
Well, your point is getting input now, but I mean, this was a process. So if somebody truly had wanted to add something to it or had a concern about a particular point of it, they had plenty of time to address it.
Like when?
Over the last three to four months. I mean, I forget when we sent the letter, was it January or? We sent the pre-letter to these guys at the DNR saying we're going to do this, X, Y, and Z. And if anybody had something they were passionate about, they would have just, I assume, jumped on it.
It was actually in December.
December, thank you. Yeah, all right. So. So we, we are looking for approval of this. I stand by the letter wholeheartedly and will probably sign it. There's been scuttlebutt in the community that we violated and we're going to, we're not going to have to pay back because we didn't violate anything. And that falls on political lines. Not going to hear anything from the audience, you've been warned once, please. Keep that to your general public comment. This is, the county is doing what it's supposed to be doing. It's addressing the questions that the DNR had. And I think we went above and beyond.
Well, my, my only recommendation is I, I looked at the report, I've seen the pictures. Great job for everybody that did it. I have no issue with the, the board chair signing it. But I would also like the names of the people that did the research and added to this, put on the bottom.
I did much of the research.
Okay, but I, I want, I want that, I mean, I, I feel it's important to put that on there in case there's questions on where this information came from.
I think the DNR will let us know if they have questions.
But I still want.
Mr. Barron?
Well, I would say the, would you like the names of those who filed these complaints too?
We didn't get it.
No, we didn't.
No, no, I know.
We haven't gotten it yet.
But, but, but the validity of this document should include those that helped.
Not to sound narcissistic, but I think the chairman's signature would indicate approval from the board because I can't do that without you guys. So I mean.
Yeah, but it wasn't the whole board that penned it either.
I, I would gladly have my name put on it.
Yes, and I would love, yes. They're the experts in it and you, you represent the book.
Saying that Bob, Commissioner Bob Peterson assisted in the?
And whoever else.
The development facilitation of this report.
There's ways of wording it, I don't know offhand, but whoever else added to this report. So we have people that are accountable of why stuff is in here. That's, that's important.
All right, well, then I would make the motion that we approve the report and have it signed and sent on.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barron. Is there support anywhere?
It, well, I support it with, with the proper.
So you would support this, you would second this with the tenom of putting Bob?
Whoever, whoever helped write this report.
Name on the report as a developer. And then anybody else admin helped?
Was there anyone else, Commissioner Peterson, that helped do this report?
Well, there was a lot of people, actually. There was Al An offer from Whitetails.
Okay.
Rory gave me a hand. He had, he had the, the history.
Okay, well, but them are all important people, you know, and they all have a good background on, on why this county forest is there. So they should be on there, I really believe it.
Right now I have a motion. Do I have a second on the motion?
Could read the motion again.
Mr. Barron is moving, moved that this report be, he's authorizing for the signature of the chairman to send on to the DNR. And then so if, if that includes writing the names of the individuals who helped in the report, somewhere in the report, I'm fine with that. Does that, your motion reflect that?
We'll let it reflect that.
All right, the motion's been.
I'll support.
So I have a motion and I have support to, this is the response to the DNR trust fund regarding the Cornell Forest, and it is a comprehensive response. Additional discussion?
Yes. The, as I mentioned to Commissioner View earlier, that we have received these complaints, they're redacted. So they are, we have, we do not know who the people are that are complaining. And that is a difficulty for me in that when, when we cannot know who made the complaints, I consider those non-complaints because they're hearsay and without that signature. And we have FOIA'd those and that the DNR has not been forthcoming yet in getting us, filling out those, and that we should continue to pursue that. Because this could release a melee coming at us. And people need to have their names, if you're going to have something there, they need to have their names. And unfortunately, they're not the ones that have their names removed. It was part of the DNR. I've had this take place in a, in my business operation where they've come in and would show up and tell us we have a complaint, we have an anonymous complaint. And my immediate response is that I do have my due process and please remove yourself from my property and get out there, unless you have a warrant in your hand. And unfortunately, most of the citizenry doesn't realize that that is your basic rights, that you need, that whether it's law enforcement or some other entity that shows up that claims to have a complaint, if it's not a, if they don't have a warrant in their hand and it's an anonymous complaint, your, your rights are, your due process rights are instantaneously violated and it bothers someone when we have public institutions that do this on a fairly regular basis. It shouldn't happen at all. Thank you.
Well, my comment also is, was that report sent to all the commissioners that we were denied the names of the complainants? Or was that just sent to you?
I don't believe it was, Ashley, was that preserved?
Yeah, it was part of the next cloud. Remember when I sent out the email about the FOIA being fulfilled, that we FOIA'd the DNR and?
But the answer, was that sent to us?
Yes, it would have been in all that information.
Okay, was there any indication on total complaints compared to total number of complainants? You know, you could have 100 complaints, but 50 of them were done by one person? Because that, that would be important too, because some person can make a complaint every, every other day. And you could have a lot of complaints, I mean, if.
You're correct.
That variable should be known.
And that's why the, this redacting the names is ridiculous. Either show us who it is and if I had my druthers, I wouldn't even answer these.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there anything else? I'll call for a roll call vote on this, please. This would again authorize the chairman to sign this document and it would be the official county response to the trust fund issue.
With the proper signatures of.
That as a part of the motion, yes.
Melner?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes. Thank you, that passes and that's now on its way to the DNR. We have our new business and we'll start off with the payment of our bills.
I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasure to the climates for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills is $1,043,741.90. Commissioner expenses of $288.76.
Gentlemen, I need a motion to pay our bills.
Move.
By Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? Let's have a roll call, please.
Okay, Melner?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes. All right, very good. Under new business, 2024 equalization report. Thank you, sir. Welcome and thank you for your service.
Thank you, good evening. We've received all the assessment rolls in from the assessors and balanced with them. And we are reporting an increase in our assessed value, an SEV, to $1,988,738,697.
Billion? Wow, you said trillion.
She said trillion.
Billion, sorry.
Well, I was going to say.
Last year I had it wrong too.
We had a juicy taxpayer for that.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. Somebody just wanted their value up. I'm sorry.
How much up, up is that percentage wise?
About seven and a half percent.
Cool.
We're still holding, the market is still good and it's still a hot market. And so we are still seeing values increase. Luckily, we have the taxable value cap of the 5% this year. So, but things are still moving.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have one, as always. It's just to clear my mind, if the millage never goes up, is there more money for the township or counties to utilize with, with that cost factor that's on the tax bills where, you know, somebody can say, well, our, the millage has never changed in 20, 25 years. But I, I know my taxes and some of my property was $200 10, 15 years ago and now it's 500. Who gets that extra money if, if the taxes never go up but that inflation factor is always on? It gives more money to the entities, correct or not?
Right, because your, the millage may stay the same, but your taxable value is going to go up the consumer price index. And that's on all properties, but you do get extra where there's a transfer of ownership when that taxable value uncaps or any new construction value. And last year and this year, we look for it to be the same. We don't look for any headly rollbacks because the actual CPI was 5.1%, but we had the 5% cap.
Right.
So we aren't looking for any rollbacks this year either. So your millages should stay steady for this year again.
And, and that's why we have that extra revenue coming in?
Right.
Okay, I, I just wanted some clarification on that. Thank you.
Anything else from the commission? We would need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, what do we got to, put this on the tax rolls?
We accept the equalization report.
Accept the report on the.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Melner to accept the equalization report and then authorize a signature. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And again, we thank you.
Thank you.
Upside down, all right, very good. The extension of the UP State Fair Campground Improvement Grant.
Sent it, I'm sorry. We sent in for you is an extension request that has been granted by the Michigan Trust Fund to extend the grant with the UP State Fair ground until August of 2024. I spoke with Vicki Mishaw from the Chamber and Mary Carlock from the MDNR Grants Division about the need for future extensions. So with the extension only compliant until August of 2024, there will probably most likely be a future extension. And I wanted to make sure that it was likely we were going to receive another extension. We've already had, I believe, three, two or three of them. And according to Mary, as long as we're making forward progress, the trust fund has no problem, just keep on extending. And then I spoke with Vicki to make sure our progress is moving forward. And they have put out a bid to receive an engineer and I'm sure Commissioner Peterson can talk a little bit more in depth about that being on the UP State Fair Advisory Board. So I'm just looking for approval from the commission for this grant, not approval, a signature for the extension to accept that August 2024 date.
So approve, approval allowing the chairman to sign.
I'll make.
Mr. Peterson?
I'll make a motion that we approve the extension on the grant.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner View, that we extend the extension on the UP State Fair Grant. Additional discussion?
Yes.
Sure.
The, one thing that's taking place is we have a, a five-year plan for the parks and the forest, but it's also tied with the fair. So we, this, this grant extension is, hopefully this gets done fairly soon because until they've completed that, we are not in a good position to rewrite the next following five year plan and apply for future grants. So this needs to get done here sooner than later.
And if I may?
Yes, sir.
One of the problems that they're running into with this is infrastructure, sewer and water. Right now, the water main that goes to that area is a two-inch water main, has, does not have nearly the capacity that is needed. There is no sewer right now going to that. And through that, the city of Escanaba wants to redo Ninth Avenue. They tear it up, they want to put sewer and water in there. And that would, the, the water, I believe, would come from, from Lincoln Road, but the sewer would have to go out to North 30th. The sewer at Lincoln Road is not deep enough down to get a gravity flow from where the campground is, the North Shore campground is, for the fairgrounds. So in the, in the sewer on North 30th is, is much deeper and could be a gravity flow. So that's, that's one of the things that we're, is holding this up. And it's, the, the Ninth Avenue redo is, at this point is absurdly expensive. And so there, we do have some hurdles that we've got to try and get through with the, with the bathhouses, which is what this grant is for, to, to fulfill the grant. So I don't see, to be honest, I don't see this being resolved this year.
How much was the grant, Commissioner?
Uh, can't remember off the top of my head, I think it was 130,000. And that was going to build two, two bathhouses, one behind the Ruth Butler Building for the campgrounds there, and the other one over by the North Shore, up by the show barn.
Have they started anything or?
Uh, no, they just got the engineers together to, to start going over the plans and, and come up with a, with a design and an idea of the cost and everything else to go with that.
And if they don't get the money, what happens?
Well, we've got the grant.
No, but I mean, the extra money to do what?
Well, there is a, there is a backup, the, from what I understand, the bathhouse behind the Ruth Butler Building, we don't have a problem with. There's sewer and there's water there, available there. The one to North Shore, which is over off of Ninth Avenue, they can come off the show barn, or horse barn, I believe it is, and they can bring it off of that, but that's, again, wholly inadequate. The supply for the water is, is small and we'd have to put in lift stations to get into the sewer. So there's a, there's a pretty good cost involved in that. I'm not privy to that yet. We'll learn more once we get the engineers' commitment.
Is, is there a sunset on some of these grants that we apply for or can we keep asking for extensions for years?
Well, I believe, I believe this grant, actually, we've had since 2020 and we weren't able to do anything with it because of the COVID. And so we're getting back, working on it. Unfortunately now, of course, the prices have gone up on everything, so.
Double.
Yeah, yeah, so it's going to, we do have a couple of ideas that might work to save us some money, but like I said, the big thing is right now is to try and get the infrastructure there for it. And, and right now, the, they're looking at North Ninth, or Ninth Avenue North, they want to put, they want to redo the road surface, they want to put infrastructure in sewer and water, they want to put curbs in, they want to put a bike path in, they want to put lighting in, and they're at about $3 million to do that.
They want us to pay for it, right?
Well, they, they, they gave, our share, the county share, if it's done, would be $1.3 million, I believe.
Okay.
Now, would that be split up between the 15 counties?
No.
No, it's us.
No, that's, that's our baby. And, and what they did was they took the landowners that go along. No, that's, that's our baby, and, and what they did was they took the landowners that go along North Ninth Avenue, and they took the percentage of each landowner, and unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, the county is the biggest landowner, holder, at, I believe it's fifty-one percent. So they're asking us to carry fifty-one percent of the cost.
This extension will not bind us to it. It's just keeping things alive for another year.
Do we get one point three million dollars?
So we have a motion. We have a second additional discussion. Let's do a roll call on this, please.
Melner?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Moya?
Yes. Very good. Item number four would be the rescinding of the Soil and Erosion Sedimentation Control Agent Award. Mr. Melner, I believe this one is yours.
Well, since what happened, the A.G. give that letter out to the ex-CEO of the Conservation District, I believe that we should rescind our decision on giving Rory the award to do the control.
All right, very good. I, I have my opinions on that. Mr. Kaplan did a fine job sending a letter to the A.G. They responded back. It was not the A.G. herself, it was one of her subordinates.
Excuse me, Commissioner?
Yes.
I think we have to have a second just to bring this into a discussion.
Oh, well, all right.
I'll make a motion on that.
All right, so you have a motion. Commissioner Melner is moving. Does wave a second?
Well, I, I want to hear what the motion is again.
What's on the, John is moving to rescind.
I mean, we have nothing in our packet about this, correct? Well, I'm.
No, it's, we do, actually.
Okay, where is it?
It's in New Business.
New Business, number four.
Under rescinding the.
B four. The hemp gra, grant?
It's the rescinding of the Soil and Erosion Contract.
Okay.
We have it, trust me. If the blind guy can see it, you should be able to see it.
Back on that.
Right here, right here, seven, award.
We have a motion on the floor. I'm waiting for a second for discussion purposes.
I'll, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Melner, seconded by Commissioner View. Now we're back into discussion. Yes. Okay, thank you. The A.G. got a letter. That's fine. Okay, one of her subordinates answered the letter. That letter was hustled quickly to the Daily Press who printed it. That, first of all, the A.G. doesn't do rulings. They issue opinions. A judge does a ruling, and it was the opinion of this lawyer that there was potential. That, that's in anything we do. Mattson hasn't been charged. He hasn't been investigated. This was a political issue, and I, for one, it, it just reeks. He has done nothing wrong, so you're gonna, you're gonna charge a guy in the court of public opinion? I, I would, I think this whole thing, let's move off of Mattson for a sec. This is for Jack, even if he passes that paper test or whatever. It's very difficult, but that does not translate to experience in the field. Jack is our employee. We owe him the best opportunity possible. We have to keep personalities out of this, and for what it's worth, for the last sixteen years, Delta County's led the state in soil and erosion, and that's by the guy who would be teaching Jack. Jack is the one that I want to get support here for. So anybody else, please, chime in.
To add to, Jack is our, from the building and zoning, is the individual that's going to be handling this in the future, and he has, he has taken his test. It's a question of it getting graded, and then we can, the county can take over with Jack going out and with the help of Rory Mattson as a contractor to help him at these sites to get this rolling as soon as possible. So it's, I put a call in to Smich Cucci to expedite getting this testing taken care of. It was, he took his test last week so that we can get rolling here, because we have, technically, the contract with the Road Commission ended Sunday, and we need to get rolling because this is, people are getting ready to go out and do things. There's requests that are going to be coming in or already in that need to be taken care of, and we need to have the best that we can here. Ashley, I, would you give me that? I've handed you three documents. There's the, just hand it back, please. Thank you. And Commissioner View, I'm going to read this in the record. This is from, that's March twenty-seventh.
Point of order, though. I mean, that's.
What's your point of order? It's already been.
He's reading something that we've already voted on and bringing it back up on a different issue.
But I'm going to read this for this item. This is another.
The Daily Press, I think. Is that what his point is?
The point, the point here is this, yes, I've ended, we've entered it and accepted it, but it's pertaining to what Mr. Malner is bringing forth of the, the A.G., and the press unfortunately said that he was convicted. When it's not a conviction, it is a, an opinion, and I think Senator McBroom did an excellent job of putting this together, and I want to read this to the audience. Those that haven't read the press, a lot of people don't get the press, but the, again, this is from the Daily Press dated three twenty-seven, twenty-four. The title they put on this is "Avoid Playing Political Games." And this is from Senator McBroom. "Over the last two decades, Tom Casperson and I waged countless battles against government overreach. Do you remember? Michigan told its citizens they could not rake the sand on their beach. They could build a garage for one snowmobile, but not two. The couple fined for more, the couple fined for more because the D.E.Q. judge judged they could afford it. Or when the republic was, and when the republic was told they couldn't have their fortieth fishing tournament unless they did a multi-year study on the impact of the fish. Together, Tom and I helped rescue homes from erosion, communities from fines and bills, and citizens from not using their own land. While not all bureaucrats are awful, many are trained to stop the people from using the land and their rights rather than finding a way for them to get it done. The government usually believes the people are the problem, and they love to make rules and memos that go above and beyond the law. That is why standing against government overreach is as critical as any role Tom and I played in serving the legislature. We were often the only voice average citizens had. Thankfully, the Delta County Conservation District elected by the people of Delta County often stood alongside us in that fight, including several of those issues listed above. The district understood and stood against this abuse. As a result, it saw fit to empower its employees, including Rory Mattson, to fight for the people for many years. We didn't always agree. We saw Mr. Mattson have to tell people they were, they were breaking the law, regulation, or that he could not permit exactly what they wanted. We also saw countless people get help and relief through his expertise and relentless pursuit of their rights and true interpretation of the law. He is one of the few persons we have in government to have a passion to help the people, speak truth to the powers in government, and have a high level of expertise in the law. So why is this new Conservation District Board running down the old boards and employees after so many years of exceptional service? What penalty can they expect to be meted, meted out on an employee who did as his elected board asked him? And what value is it to hear from the Attorney General and state agencies that always hated the district? Mr. Mattson and their work for the people against those same agencies. If the old board was doing something wrong for decades, why was it not pointed out in all those past court cases? Why did the agencies lose so often? The current board's actions do not help Delta County's citizens. They distink some partisan politics from both the state and locally. It would be best if the district board would avoid playing political games and would just return to providing real services to the citizens already under duress from government, governments that do not help them. Heaven knows, we all need this." Senator Ed McBroom. Yes, it's, what you're bringing forth here is the an article in the press for someone who was doing a, condemning someone for doing a good job. I don't think this should have been brought in the first place, and I'm not for going after someone for doing a good job, and the, the service that's been rendered for the landowners, not only in Delta County but across the state, is unprecedented and been of great value. The amount of cases that Rory has come in as a witness for property owners, he has, his, his testimony, every case has been won by the property owner. We should be cheering that. The government didn't take away their rights. So I think this, this item and this motion need to be defeated.
Yes, if I may, make a couple comments, Chair. The motion said, "Moved by Commissioner Baron and seconded by Commissioner Peterson to accept the bid and award it to the one bidder and then his name." What was the bid? How much was the bid?
I think that was yet to be determined by the finance committee.
It was a qualification.
The last sentence.
Okay, what, but then this motion, I remember voting against this motion because it didn't make sense, you know, to accept, to accept the bid, and there was no bid.
No, it was a qualification.
RFP, or RFQ, I'm sorry.
I read the, I just read the motion. It says to accept the bid and award it. That, that's what it says right in front of me.
It would be an RFQ, so that would have been a misspeak.
Bid for qualifications.
That's what I understand it, but this motion doesn't say that.
I guess it depends on how you interpret it. That was my understanding.
It says RFQ on them.
So at issue is.
So a bid is just the qualifications and no money?
Right, on that particular.
On that particular motion, that was a qualification issue.
Okay, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, when we talked about this, we were going to pull permits without anyone legally able to pull a permit, or we were going to wait and do Soil and Erosion and wait till he passed.
Commissioner, are you driving towards Commissioner Melner's motion is what I'm getting at?
I'm driving towards what would be properly to do in this case, because.
We are limited to either accepting Mr. Mattson or rejecting his contract based on Commissioner Melner's motion. It's not me limiting you or trying to stop you because you're always can bring something forward, but.
Where's the contract, then?
We have a motion on the floor, and so.
Pardon, pardon me.
We are accepting or denying the contract. Determining what the financial aspects of it is a totally another matter.
There is no contract.
That's where I'm confused. I.
So we, we voted.
Put it this way, I, I don't have any issue with a qualified person that applied for this job to take the job.
Right.
For Ashley to say, this is it. The finance committee say, this is the money, but I want to make sure that there's somebody that can pull the permits and that this ten ninety-nine employee or independent contractor that we're going to have from the county has no decision-making powers, right?
He is.
He recommend, his recommendations are only to Jack Smith, nobody else. He probably will have limited ability to see pertinent records of the county.
I'm, I'm trying here, but you're driving me towards ruling you out of order based on the motion on the floor. We are accepting or denying this individual's essentially contracted employment. We can get into what you're talking about after, but the order on the floor right now is, do you want the one person that responded to the RFQ on the county as a contracted employee to help Jack Smith out? That's the, I'm not trying to cut you off, but you, you're really.
Well, you are cutting me off.
It's because we're limited to John's motion. You seconded it.
But that motion has to do with, is he going to have the ability to do this without being qualified to do it?
He's very qualified to do it.
Jack Smith is qualified.
No, Rory Mattson is qualified to assist Jack Smith.
Yes.
But there's a gray area there.
Mr. Mattson, as I understand it, is here to help train Mr. Smith, our building and zoning operator.
The practical.
In, in the practical end of it, yes. He's taken the, the test. He, and we'll find out here shortly if he's passed it. Mr. Mattson will be teaching, aiding and teaching the finer points of the soil erosion.
Absolutely. I, I agree that he has the ability to do that, but we don't have anyone with the ability to pull a permit at this point. We really don't.
Well, we're.
And, but yet, we're, we're giving a bid out for someone to help someone to do something they can't do.
They can pull the permits.
They can't sign it.
They can't sign it until he, he get, Jack gets his.
Plus, he can't sign it, plus, we'll probably be paying him.
We will be paying him. He's a contracted employee. He's a ten ninety, uh, ten ninety-nine, I think.
So we got a person that can't sign it, but can help, and we're paying him.
Well, we would.
Per, per job description or?
Mr. Baron is, once you're done, Mr. Baron has got his hand up.
Are you done, John?
Yeah, I'm done. I.
Okay, again, we're, the, the motion, as I understand it, is, as it says, to rescind the Soil, Erosion Sedimentation Control Agent Award. The, the, we've, the last meeting that we had two weeks ago, we went through this where we had already passed where that Jack Smith and Mr. Mattson could go out and visit these sites, then with knowing that Jack was, is going to take his testing and that would be hopefully approved or certified, so that they would already have the visits in, and when the certification came, they'd be able to sign off on these. So as Commissioner Malner is saying, we'll be paying him. Yes, we'll be paying him. That's correct, but it's for a service that we plan on being able to sign off in the future, a short-term future, and that would have to take place regardless. This, this still service is still be there. There would still be a monetary compensation taking place. So I, I believe that the, we need to make a vote on this motion, and I believe we're going to, this discussion is going in circles here. I would call the question.
Well, I'd like to speak before you call the question.
Then I'll rescind that.
This is based on personality and your dislike of Rory Mattson, and I, I am not, you are out of order, and I will have you removed from the room. You've been warned. I will. Leave the room, please. You, well, I will ask you to leave the room. You're refusing. I need to, you are interrupting the work of the people. Remain silent, please. This is based on personality. If it was somebody else would be doing this, we've never had a problem paying a contracted employee, and we're hung up on a technicality. And so Jack Smith is going to get, I believe, this pass, but there is still a wicked amount of difference between having, passing this test on paper and going out in the field and understanding the complexities of soil and erosion. And I would remind you, gentlemen, that is not easy. It is extremely complicated, and he's going to need a mentor. Whether you like him or not, it, don't throw the county under the bus.
We still have the Road Commission doing it.
They don't want to, though, John. They want it out for a while.
Is, is there anyone else that can help?
Keep doing it.
Helping the intern like Delta, Delta County Conservation District? Do they have somebody qualified till he passed his test?
We put out the RFQ. We have one respondent. We didn't.
We don't even know what the, we don't even know what the bid is, how much it is or anything, and we're, we're approving something that we don't have the details of. We don't have the ice.
We went through the process.
Do we have the details of what it gets paid? Or are we going to do that after this?
The finance committee.
So what is on the agenda is just rescinding the award. It has nothing to do with finance. We brought forward, we brought, it's a piece, what is it, piecework type structure that has been approved for finance. It was not brought forward to this board meeting because the rescinding of the award was on the agenda.
Do we have discretion to do that, or is that your decision?
Can you, it was requested by Commissioner Malner to rescind the award, so it wasn't my discretion.
Well, I know Jack needs help. I talked to him personally. He needs the practical help, and we have one of the best persons in the county that has been doing it for how many years?
Thirty.
Twenty-five, thirty years. It's the process that I can approve by, you know, so let's go with the vote.
All right, we have no other discussion. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Okay, and this is to rescind the award.
This would be to rescind the award for our Soil and Erosion. Yes, if you want to rescind this, you would vote yes. If you don't want to rescind it, you would vote no.
Melner?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Baron?
No.
Peterson?
Nope.
And Moya?
No. All right, very good. Joins to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Gentlemen, I believe you have applications in front of you. Each district. Each district representative or commissioner would make an appointment.
I would move that for District Two, Brian Godfrey be accepted as the representative for District Two.
All right, do we have a motion, a second on that?
All second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Brian, thank you for your interest. Uh, anybody else, please?
I'd like to make, if we're going district by district...
Yep.
Okay, um, I would like to move forward that we accept the application from Ray Drew.
What, what district?
Ray Drew or Drew?
District Five.
Yep.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Mr. Melner?
District One, Valaket.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Melner.
I'll support that.
Supported by Mr. Peterson to accept the application of Mr. Valaket. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Barron?
District Three, I, I make a motion to accept Alan Ettenhofer.
We have a motion by Mr. Barron from Al. Anybody support?
Support.
All right, motion and support to accept Alan Ettenhofer for District Three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
My district is Rory Mattson. That's my motion. I need support.
Support.
Okay, I have support. All those in figure are in favor of, uh, accepting Rory for this. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. So we have all five districts placed, and this item of business is rapidly coming into, reality. Very good. We have general public comment. You have three minutes to address the board on general public comment. Please take advantage of it. State your name, where you live, and tell us what you think.
Ryan Godfrey, Gladstone. Um, sorry about earlier. I knew the protocol, but I got excited about this. Um, as going forward with the dinner for the vets, um, one thing I found out that a lot of the finances from upper Michigan end up in lower Michigan because of the vet, you know, I think they said like Grand Rapids, Lansing, because there's more vets in that area. Um, I know, um, this might come up really wrong, but this is what came out at the meeting. When they asked if any of the finances that we make up here could go downstate, I said, no trolls are getting our money, Uppers first. So, um, just so everybody knows that all the money that we make on June 15th will stay in upper Michigan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
General public comment, please.
Hello, my name is Clayton Harris. I live in Rapid River, a pipe and bringing to the multiple structures that have been built, homes unpermitted, uh, uninspected, every aspect of it, absolutely nothing, and people occupying it. The county knows it. There is massive liability if somebody was to die in explosion, a fire, electrocution. So recently I had a meeting with Jack Smith. He informed me in his office that Ashley and him have decided to slow roll me. This building is 12 feet by 28. The man lives in it. He's lived in it for five years.
Mr. Harris, could you address the board, please? Could you address us, sir?
Huh?
Address us, please.
If I, I'm trying to make sure the people that know do. All right. Jack Smith was aware of this, and Ashley. I informed them about this last year on 6/20. I requested information about it, how far, how it's gone, how things are going. Eight months, people, eight months. Jack has not made the person move out of the house, and he has not inspected the house. All he's done is sell them the permits. It's right here. I have proof on every one of these. Ashley is complicit with helping Jack not do this. All of these homes aren't paying taxes.
So you have to address us. I'm sorry about that.
All of these homes aren't paying taxes, and I did bring this to you over the Christmas holidays. You were going to come out with me and look at it. You were a no-show, so I think you're not concerned. There, in my township, Baldwin Township, your home is supposed to be assessed every five years. I asked for information. Five hundred and some were sent to me. Some have not been, the majority have not been assessed in decades according to the records. These homes I have in here are almost a million dollars worth of stuff that should be inspected.
Sir, it's your last warning. Please address us.
They should be on the tax roll, but the county's liability with the people living in them should not be allowed. I think you should terminate Ashley and Jack. Jack is an inexperienced building inspector, and the worst part is, you ready? He owns the lumberyard over there. That is a conflict of interest in my eyes and a lot of people I have brought this to. Basically, I'm keeping from saying, I keep getting lied to by your officials, and I'm trying to make the county aware of. Do you realize how much taxes? And Jack even says, this is rampant. I found this, this is two to three miles on one road, a million dollars in my estimation. And what, you know what? One of the people that built ISS, a $300,000 building, used to be a township trustee when he built it. Does any of this make sense to any of you? I brought it up, Stephen View, I want to thank you for what attention you could give to it. But nobody, if I owned a lumberyard and I needed customers that I had just bought, I wouldn't want to piss anybody off. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will address during commissioners' concerns when I can. Gen, uh, general public comment.
Hi, name's Kay Rollins. And Mr. Harris, um, I had suggested before that you file a complaint with the state building inspector. I got a few things I wanted to talk about. One was you had mentioned Schoolcraft County is collecting two tenths of a mill for their veterans. Well, I can assure you that, um, Schoolcraft County does not have the assessed value that Delta County does. So their two mills might be the same or less than, or more than, our one mill. If you knew anything about mills and how it's figured out and who's got the most assessed value in the UP, which is Marquette. Second was Delta. Schoolcraft is pretty well down there. That was my second issue. Third issue was McBroom's opinion in that letter. Now, I am sure McBroom does not hang out with Rory Mattson, so how would McBroom even know what a character Mr. Mattson is? And wasn't Mr. Mattson guilty of putting chemicals in empty milk jugs and passing them out? Thank you.
Thank you. General public comment, please. General public comment. Going once. Thank you. Will remain quiet in the audience, please.
Well, just real quick for Ed McBroom. The reason Ed McBroom can answer that question is because every court that I, uh, got into for a private landowner and was an expert witness was referred by Tom Caspersen or Ed McBroom. And I've also had Commissioner View out a couple of times to show him different things that the reason the Conservation District ended up with soil erosion. Jack Smith needs help. Jack Smith is a carpenter. I mean, that's, if I could just put it in lay terms. He's nervous about this, and I don't blame the man. I'm confused, though, of what the process has been. So I understand why Commissioner View is, uh, that way. So originally, Jack was going to take a test a month ago, but on a Friday or Thursday night, Sandy passed away. So he canceled his, uh, test. And yes, you have to be certified, obviously, to go out and sign the permit. So when that test got canceled, it came here, and I was put on, I thought, as a contractor, um, by this board. And then I met with this board, I believe, passed. If we look back, I could be totally wrong, but I did check it out with administration, and also I asked Nancy that called her. I said, am I, am I there, am I not there? Um, so we could start the process because I thought I could sign them. Then I guess the DEQ weighed in, or Ashley called and found out some information that you have to be an employee, and probably that's why I could do it for the Conservation District. I was an employee. So doing that, I never wanted to be employee. Then I think that got confused, and all I ever wanted to do was help Jack out. When you take this test, you'll find out that it's all arithmetic, and it's all looking things up. So you go to the NRCS soils book, and you find where you are. That's not always accurate. You have to be on the ground. So you look up the soil, and when you look up the soil, it has a figure. You plug your figure in, you put your slopes in to find out how much erosion is going to move. You need to know if it's clay, sand, silt, or loam. That's what I plan to do with Jack. He, I've studied soils for 40 years, and Jack has not. So that's the difference that I see here. He's going to need somebody. I only put in because I figured nobody else was going to do it. So Jack has taken the test last week. I think this commission should send something to the DEQ and say, just grade it. It should not take months because Mitch Coochie was here and told this county whatever they needed to do to help. Just take it. And if that's the case, and also I believe the road commission, I'm guessing they'll go on. I've heard from Commissioner Melner, Commissioner View, it's opposite, but I believe they had a contract with the county until last Sunday, and it's done. There is no permit sitting at, uh, uh, building and zoning right now. That's a good thing. We're going to get a big snowstorm, so we have some time. But I'll help out if I can, and that's the only reason I asked to do it.
Thank you. Very, very good. Anybody else? General public comment.
Hi, good evening. Kelly Van Genhoven, City of Escanaba. Um, earlier this week, um, I had sent in a request asking for an explanation on your email policy that you have as commissioners, whether or not you could use your personal emails for, um, professional, um, county bu, county business, excuse me. And I did get the email policy back, but from what I read, it doesn't say anything about using your personal email for county business. So I'd just like to address these few points. The most important thing to remember is that keeping government communications separate is good for both you as commissioners and the government. If you use a personal email account for government communications, you potentially open up that email account to government examination in instances of litigation discovery, audits, or FOIA requests. But this is not where the issue ends. By using a personal email account for government business, it means that your government's official records are being stored on mail servers that are beyond your government's and their IT department's control. This leads to complication when it comes to records retention and destruction as well. Your government cannot dispose of what it does not know about and cannot protect records they do not have access to. While you may diligently dispose of the emails in your government email account during your yearly disposition, the likelihood that you are also scouring your personal account for government emails is extremely low. These issues are complicated even further when an event like a FOIA request or e-discovery for litigation happens. Sending official government communications through a non-government channel means that the government either cannot produce those records or they have to shoulder the cost of having someone search through your personal emails for official government records. So I recently submitted a FOIA request to the Delta County Conservation District, and I was quite alarmed when I saw that Rory Mattson was sending county email to Bob at Statewide Real Estate, to Robert Barron at iCloud, to Dave Moyle at Gmail, all while this, uh, discussion of your easement amendment was going on. And no communications were sent to Mr. Malner or Mr. View about this, but they were to the three of you on your personal email accounts. Now you look back and you say, yeah, in, up to June, they were using, uh, county emails, but then after June, they started using personal emails. And I want to know if that's allowed or not. Are you allowed to receive government communications and county business through your personal email? And why you would even do it in the first place? It's not very transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else or general public comment? General public comment going once? Twice? Hey, Dave.
Hey, good evening. Hope everybody had a good Easter. Um, I've been counting these meetings for about two years, and I've heard you guys talk a lot about veterans, veteran service, talk about Dave, the veteran service officer, how he's understaffed, how we've got other counties with less people, and yet what I hear at the meetings is this. We've changed direction a couple of times. We're still working on it. Now we're going to pass it out for the funding for the general public to vote on. Hey, that's great. But while we stall, every day we delay. I mean, some of you commissioners claim to be big on veterans. You know how many veterans every day take their own life? It's 22 every single day. I was on board with your Second Amendment, especially when I heard the part about the behavioral health. Having worked at the VA, and then Commissioner Barron, then you started to go on your tangent about behavioral health and how you thought it was BS, a self-generating financial bunch of crap. And while you're talking about that, 22 of my brothers and sisters and aunt every single day perish. So, yes, I'd like to see more done with the veterans, and I'd like to not keep going in different directions. I'd like to see us move forward and actually do something. Thank you for supporting the amendment or the, uh, putting it on the ballot. I'm glad to see that. Thank you. As far as procedure, hey, you know, we see a lot of mixed things with procedure. Last week, gentleman that spoke after me didn't identify himself, spoke to the audience. When the audience corrected him, they were admonished. Now, I don't mind the gentleman looking at me, but I did object to him leaning on me with his handgun in my face or whatever the hell he was wearing on his shoulder. If anybody'd like to review the video, hey, that's great. I think I handled things very well and very calmly. Couple other things of business. Trust. As a member of this community, I expect to trust you commissioners when you get up here and speak and you tell us the way it is. When we get information we know is false, it brings into question everything you tell us. Everything, your motives. You know, Commissioner Peterson, I'm going to ask you a question. Did you read the executive order from President Biden that had to do with the oil and gas leasing? Because if you had, there's only two conclusions. You read it, and you misrepresented yourself to the, all the good citizens, or you didn't read it. So that stuff's all available to be read. You know, what I said was true. Um, you can read it for yourself. You don't have to trust me. You can look these up. You can read those executive orders, all that kind of stuff. And as long as we're putting stuff on the record and reading things into the record, I would like to have the interview with Mr. Castro, Mr. Commissioner Moyle, and Mr. Hyken right into the committee. I'd like to have one of the commissioners make that motion. I'd also like to have Commissioner make a motion to have that investigated. Commissioner Moyle, you stated Mr. Hyken did not work for you. He stated in the interview, Reed Hyken and Mr. Castro, that he was working for you when he was stalking and harassing a political opponent. So I'd like to see a motion made to bring that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else during general public comment, please? General public comment is closed. Commissioners' concerns. Mr. Peterson?
Um... I guess I'm going to reserve, maybe have you come back to me.
Very good. Mr. View?
Better, better turn on so you can hear me. Want to thank the crowd for showing up tonight. It makes us better commissioners, more aware of what your concerns are. I just want to make a couple of comments. I better not say a couple because that means two, and I might have three. Jack Smith does need help. We had one qualified person apply. He needs the practical experience. I support that portion of it. I do not support the portion where I, I'm confused. There's a lot of gray areas on what they're doing prior to having the authority to do it. That's just my opinion on why I voted the way I did. Personal emails, I don't know the rule on it, but sometimes I do use my personal email, not to hide anything, but it just, some people know me personally, have my email, and they question me that way or on my personal phone, but every time I am FOIA'd, my phone is available to be scrutinized with the FOIA coordinator. So if I hear something that we should absolutely not use them at all times, I don't use...
I don't use it much, I will cut it out. Limited knowledge on how the general budget works. I, I can't say enough about representing all the people and especially having a lot of passion for representing the, what is it? We have, what, 13% of our county is vets, maybe 20% with their families. I just thought that all the other departments for years have been financed by the general budget. They've all received increases and whatever they needed, maybe at bare minimums. But they're running these services for all our county constituents. I think we dropped the boat many years ago by not including this department in there, is my opinion. And that's why I thought, as a last resort, let's go for the taxes. I wasn't in favor of taxing people to try to get services. But I will support this tax personally, myself. I asked about grants. There's some housing plan goals with $60 million in addressing regional housing needs. I, I get information like this all the time, so I'm just curious if we could get a list of who rates our grants or who applies for our grants. I think I asked for this before. And I think it's important to get some of the taxpayers' money back in our community where we, we need it. I'm not accusing anyone of not dropping the ball or nothing. I just want to see if I can steer some people on these committees that I belong on to grab a piece of the pie for us. Another one is Eagle. Do you have that tire community cleanup again? I just talked to the lady up in Marquette. If somebody wants to take the ball and run with that, we could start cleaning up our tires here. There's a lot of information on. I don't know if a commissioner can take charge of that or not. Who would I ask? I mean, could I call her up and say, hey, I can get a guy with a semi and have a drop-off place and clean up tires? Let me know if, I know Ashley's busy, but can we take on some pet projects like this or not? Is that permissible?
The past commissioners have.
They have? Okay. Well, I might see what I can do then. I just, I'm just warning you, or not warning you. I'm not doing something wrong. Well, maybe I am warning you, that it's important that if nobody else has time and I can see a little bit of leadway to do some of this stuff for our citizens, I'll, I'll probably do it. Last I, last thing I have is this, it's called Initiative of Legislation. And I know we have controversy on the board for this, but it's the Take Back Local Control from the Public Service Commission that, that was passed by the Senate or the legislators a few months back, to put it on the ballot for the people to vote on having that control come back to your townships, your cities, your counties. I had all the vets in here sign my first page. I have a bunch here. If people are passionate enough, I will hand these out. And all you have to do is figure out what county you're going to sign in for. And I'm, it's Delta County. Fill them out, get them back to me or Commissioner Melner, or I don't know if any other commissioners want to accept them. And we'll make sure that Senator McBroom gets these. Telling you how to vote or what, what to think about, but it's something that we're working on that we feel is important for our community. The last thing is I give my trust to people by how they treat me and stuff like that. And I know darn well respect has to be earned, and that takes both, both people to try to look past their differences and earn that respect. And I try every day to get that among my fellow commissioners, the staff of the county, and most importantly, all the people of the county. Thank you.
Mr. Melner.
Steve kind of took some of my stuff away, but I do have it. And that is for Citizen for Local Choice, Ballot Initiative for Restoring Local Voices Together. Last week, me and Steve were invited to Pipeline Safety. We went to a safety training class, and I have done it three years in a row. Very good information on pipelines. We had DTE there. We had, oh, Embridge was there. There was four of them all, altogether. And it was very good information. And as always, I am still fighting on this step tank system for the state of Michigan. Me and Steve are both on the same board for MAC. Third thing is Great Lakes Tunnel. I get a lot of information from Great Lake, Line 5. And here's a little outfit that they had out there. According to a study from a nonpartisan Consumer Energy Alliance, closing Line 5 would cost Michigan over $2 billion per year on fuel. Will kill 6,600 jobs. Will cost Michigan labor $464 million in income. And will drive all $3 billion in economy active in Michigan. So it's very important that we keep fighting for Line 5. Second of all, I, road commission meeting, they give me a few maps. I still have a few of them left if anybody is interested in them. I'll just leave them up here, and that is about all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barron.
Couple items brought up by the Commissioner View and Commissioner Melner. The, the so-called petition going around for local control is not as truthful as it should be. It's not, it's about local regulatory control. And for local regulators to have that control, they have to get this, they have to follow statutes that were passed by the state and federal governments. So in reality, it's, it's a backdoor way of the federal and state governments having more local control, but just having the locals do it for them. It's, and if you read the statute, it's, it did not take away local control. It put a limit on what you could do locally. And any of the entities that are citing, that want, that want to put in wind and solar have to work with the locals. And so it's, I find it very deceiving when this, this whole going out that it's the citizens for it. No, it's the local regulators that are wanting this, because they want to regulate. It's not about the personal property rights. Personal property rights, or property rights in general, the ultimate control of property rights should be with the owner, not somebody else. Also about Line 5, I do find it interesting that Commissioner Melner has been bringing that up and for the, most of the three years that we've been on the commission, three-plus years we've been on the commission. But the one that he was pushing earlier on the Attorney General is trying to shut it down. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense here that we go with one, not the other. So anyway, but I do have, I do have some quotes. "If you just set out to be liked, you will be prepared to, you would be prepared to compromise on anything at any time. It would achieve nothing." Margaret Thatcher. "A hero is no braver than an ordinary man, but he is brave five minutes longer." Ralph Waldo Emerson. Character is much easier to keep, to, much easier to keep than recovered, excuse me. Character is much easier kept than recovered. Thomas Paine. Courage is resistant, courage is resistance to fear, not absence of fear. Mark Twain.
That's it. Thank you. Ash.
Commissioner Peterson, you want to come back or?
I'll get back to him.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, everyone, I have a little sore throat today. So I just want to address one of the concerns that were brought up with the Building and Zoning Administrator and him owning a lumberyard. I remember in the previous administration that lumberyard was talked about. And I have full confidence that the previous administration would have not hired Jack Smith if that was a conflict of interest. So I just want to make sure everybody is assured of that. And then also, it was brought up about the tax database from the assessors and that there was places that haven't been assessed for five years. Those are the township's responsibility and not the county's responsibility of those tax rolls. So we have been working. I know this individual has come up and did a lot of FOIA requests, and we've been communicating with him. So I just wanted to keep you up to date that there was no conflict of interest, or I believe that Mrs. Alva wouldn't have ever hired, hired him, so.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson.
You know, I think I spewed on long enough about the grant for the fairgrounds. I think I'll just let it rest at that. And pass.
I need to address the items as they go down the list. Mr. Harris, we did speak a couple of times. And when we spoke, I said I'd get ahold of you or you'd get ahold of me. It's not out of sight, out of mind. I still think many of your points are solid. But I, I would need to get together with you and another commissioner. This is complicated by the fact that the county, under state law, cannot enforce zoning in municipalities or townships. It is going to, you know, we can't create things. They're going to have to enforce that themselves. I, I still am for getting out of zoning, because my constituents already pay for it. That doesn't mean I want to stick it to the people who need our zoning. I just, I haven't, forgot what you said and what we talked about specifically, but I, I am one guy. I think you can get another one of us, if we can, three of us can go out together, and that might get you more results. Meeting, yeah.
In public, I'd like to just ask.
No, you're, I had this really out of order, but I, come, come after the meeting, please. I can't respond. They can't do a back and forth. It's against the rules. Thank you. I, in regards to my personal email, I haven't used my personal email in a long time. Every once in a while, that, that occurs because of how busy you get during the day. But I would say 99.9% of my emails now go over the county portal. In terms of what Reed Hyken said, if he said he worked for me, he's pretty damn stupid, because I don't pay anything. Reed has never worked for me. Contrary to the beliefs of my detractors, I am not some kingpin of power who sends out henchmen to stalk people. Ms. Van Genhoven, I've got a screen cap of you saying Reed never set foot on your property. I, I cannot control. I have no desire to control the minds, the hearts, or the actions of, of men. And so in terms of chili, I, you've freedom to listen to that interview somewhere on YouTube. And in terms of Reed, he's a dear friend of mine, but I did not send him out to stalk anyone. And I believe the actions of the district court prove that, as well as the actions of the circuit court. And I'll, the rest is Mr. Hyken's decision how he wants to handle that. We have Board of Commissioner meeting set up one week from today here at the Service Center. This would be our, it would be compulsory meeting that we have to have. That's at 5:15. I do not believe we are having a meeting on the, is that correct, on the 17th? Have we canceled it? 16th? Okay, that was canceled. That would mean the next meeting after our compulsory meeting would be May 7. So without that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron. Support. Have a good night. Mr. Clarence, come on up, please.